I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
He's first, I'm second. Great. I'll give him that one. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Is there anyone here for public comment? It doesn't look like it. Consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda? Actually, I would just like to pull one of the items from the consent agenda. The county attorney's office. Just, I just believe that when there's a human involved in consent agenda, I'd like to pull them separate.
Motion to approve A.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. So we're only a few minutes off the schedule and Elena is here to speak about the septic loan approval.
Yes, thank you. Hi. And I shouldn't be too long. So I'm just asking for a request. The septic system loans, our office has been asked just to help, you know, administrate them. And so the loans come in and when we have one that is a business, they're allowed to go up to $100,000. The state allows it to go above that and our county is capped at 100,000. We have one system here from a property owner that due to extra blasting, rain, they had to locate a pipe that was put under the highway from Mindott and a lot of other circumstances that raised the cost over 100,000 to, close to 700, 7,000. So instead of having two loans, the property owners have requested that additional funds be placed on their loan. And our still on water board in the process is supposed to approve the first part and they said that's fine. So I'm coming before you today to see if we can add the extra $7,000 to their loan.
Thank you. So we'll start with discussion and comment, questions. Commissioner Deschaux, do you have a question or comment?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Burschain?
No.
Commissioner DuKirk?
No questions.
Commissioner Starlee?
No questions.
I just have one quick question for you Elena. So how long ago did we set that limit of 100,000?
I've been doing this for seven years, so seven years.
So at least seven years.
Yeah.
So there's that aspect to it as well.
Yeah.
Prices have gone up.
Yeah.
Obviously. Motion to approve. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The proprietor, thank you Sue Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, Bill Lane, Land Services Administrator, to speak to us about the workforce housing in Lutzen. See your request.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Morning.
Yes, this is the manifestation of affordable housing, employee housing, and now workforce housing. This was before the Planning Commission on July 12th of 2017. And the location of this is on about 25 acres of Arrowhead Electric Cooperative property, which they subdivided in the spring of this year to create three parcels. The 9.99 acre parcel of which is the location of at least the first phase of affordable housing. The plan is to have four unit residences, a total of 16 units, for employees in various stages of employment in different locations. It isn't specific to an industry or a business or anything like that. And obviously, this is, I was involved with the land use guide plan formulation and this is really what has been identified as a critical need for Cook County. So from the land services perspective, we really approach this as what we can do to facilitate this. The first is obviously having a good location. In the Planning Commission discussion, there was some concern about the location. Early on, land services identified Mindott cooperation and other permitting processes as necessary to allow an easy seamless entrance and exit from the property. I think that they're still working on that solution here. It isn't just something they say, yeah, go ahead, put in that left turn lane. And as you all know, that's a very narrow corridor of Highway 61. You've got pretty big elevational differences between the roadbed and the existing ditches and stuff. So there is a safety concern. And I think looking at this as a review of the hearing, safety was the biggest issue that was identified. The whole process is under jurisdictional review from federal, state, and local regulatory agencies. The wetland issue has been formally addressed and is being resolved. One Roof just sent Mitch Travis, our wetland authority, a letter with the intent to purchase wetland credits to allow infrastructure to be installed and that sort of thing. A huge impediment to getting done. The land use permitting, we're waiting for specific building designs and stuff like that. But listening to One Roof at the meeting in July, their designs are very simple, very aesthetic, and one of the bigger concerns that I heard from local residences was the night sky influence. And One Roof will be using down directed lighting, minimal lighting. So ideally, if you look at this through rose colored glasses, this is the ideal advance of workplace housing in Cook County. The Board of Planning Commission, excuse me, had a pretty long discussion. They voted five to one in favor of the request to establish the CUP. And with the conditions that were established, and I apologize, I didn't get you the draft resolution on this, but the conditions that will be on that resolution are on the narrative that I provided. Basically, go forward with this was the advice of the Planning Commission and that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Questions, comments for Bill? Commissioner Starlee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the wetland issue has been addressed. Will there still need to be an archaeological survey?
I'm not sure about that. That has not been formally identified to me. I heard something about that just last week. That's kind of a, it's a precarious delay potentially because SHPO, which is under the Minnesota Historical Society auspices, does have the ability to kind of circumvent regulatory processes. Certainly, that would be a big concern, but I think it's just because of the historical presence of that parcel in relation to the Lutzen School, that little cemetery that's across the highway and that sort of thing. At this point, Commissioner Starlee, I would suggest that we haven't heard anything definitive on that, but it would certainly be something that we would want to have addressed immediately.
Okay. Tonight, the Lutzen Town Board will have their continuation of their annual meeting and this workforce title will be coming up. And since we have EDA members here, maybe one of you could attend that meeting just to have a little support for any questions or I could try to handle the questions because I think it will still come up, especially since we have folks in the area who voice their opinion about the effect on their property taxes. You know, the night sky has been addressed, but I'm just giving you that bit of information as what's happening tonight at six o'clock at the Lutzen Township meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Burschain?
No.
Commissioner Deschaux?
Yeah, I think the last time you were here, we were talking about that sort of cultural thing there and make sure that gets done and make sure the need funds gets done.
Great. Thank you. I would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Thank you. Discussion. Are there any other questions, comments? Okay, are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. I would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Thank you. Discussion. Are there any other questions, comments? Okay, are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just including that in the broader.
Brady Powers, you are up with the Cook County revolving loan fund request.
Madam Chair, the revolving loan fund committee met on August 7th, a week ago Monday. Myron was there for the meeting. Our first item was a request for a revolving loan from Odin Jorgensen for $55,000 to purchase the Tyran Auto Lodge. The committee recommended approval with a term of 10 years and an interest rate of one and a half percent over the 10-year T-bill. And the reason for those terms is that the security offered is the equipment in the building, which is estimated at something over $100,000 for a $55,000 loan. There's essentially nothing left on the building itself under the SBA loan and bank loans. So this is the security that's remaining, but the, given the amount of equipment in relation to the loan, the committee was satisfied that we would be secure. So the remaining steps would be the county attorney would prepare a loan agreement. We would prepare the promissory note and amortization schedule. And I'd ask for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments for Brady? Commissioner Deschaux? Commissioner Burschain? Commissioner DuKirk? No questions? Commissioner Starlee?
I just have a comment that I'm glad that businesses are moving along in the county and when one person sells to another person, that we're right in there helping them out too. Continue good work there.
And he's also looking at, as small as the lot is, there's potential for a little bit of expansion. So there's even the possibility of, you know, additional staff, not right away, but not part of this plan.
Good. Okay, thank you.
So I just have a question about, but I think it'll be addressed with this whole conversation, the higher ed piece too, which I'm not here to represent, but maybe you're representing higher ed piece too.
Yeah, that's next.
Yes. So obviously, this is not an endless fund and we're reaching the limit, right? Or the, what's left of that fund?
Well, we've bumped up against the limits from time to time.
Yeah.
It varies. There was a point in the late 90s when we were looking at trying to sell off all of our old loans on the secondary market in order to restock the fund.
Yeah.
And we've tried to ask the DED, the State Department of Economic Development, because that's where the funding came from originally, and they're just without funds and they're not, at this time, they're not willing to do that. But we collect something over 15,000 a month in repayments. So we're able to kind of limp along at this point. If we get too many $75,000 requests, yeah, we will be at a standstill, but right now we're okay.
So, and 75,000 is the?
That's a self-limit. The state doesn't limit it. They limit it to about 250,000. But this limit is because we've avoided wanting to go through all the steps to give a subsidized loan over 75,000. You'd have to have things like livable wage and then we'd have to follow up on wage goals and go out and monitor and report extensively on it. And the board has never wanted to go to that lengths. So we keep the subsidized loans, this 1% of a 10-year T-bill or one and a half when it's equipment, securing it at 75 or under. We will do loans to 200 now, but those are at market rates. And then we don't have to worry about the requirements.
Oh, okay. So it's really about the?
Yeah, then we just go, then we just go pull all the local banks up and down the shore and locally here and we just take an average. So it still allows people, if they need some other kind of financial support, but they don't need the subsidized interest rates. So that's there too.
Great. Thank you. And the vote was not unanimous?
This was unanimous.
Oh, this one was unanimous?
Yes.
That's right. The next one, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion, questions?
No.
Oh, so I have, sorry. Would someone like to?
This is the first one.
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion. Thank you. Support. Thank you. Yes, is there, are there any more people who'd like to discuss or comments? Thank you. Any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So the second one was the split vote.
There we go. Okay. And I'll come together in my mind.
This was a proposal by higher education. They have a loan with a balance of $53,270 and they offered to pay off that loan if the committee would forgive some of the balance. So their offer was to pay off $50,000 and then forgive the balance, $3,270.78. There was an initial motion for a smaller forgiveness of loan, which was based on what banking does. According to Hal Green, they said the standard is like 2% that they offer in forgiveness from time to time. I don't know what the conditions are, but, and that would be something just over $1,000, 2% of 50. And that one did not pass. It was a split, a tie vote. So we had a second vote and then it was approved four to two on the second vote. The reason for it, again, is the idea that we are short. If we had, if we had another 75,000 and a 50 come in, we'd be saying, I'm sorry, you might wait six months or eight months and at 15,000 a month, we might have enough for you. But we'd be stuck if we had a couple of them come in right now. So there is some, you know, reasoning for that. The other, let's say, question that came up was on forgiveness of loans. That's in state statute too. And if you're going to forgive over 25,000, that comes under the subsidy rule. And in that case, you would have to start following those reporting rules that are much more complicated, et cetera. So we've never done that. We've never done a forgiveness, but for history, we've done interest forgiveness, which is essentially the same thing. I mean, one time we did it for, because the interest rates have been high in the 90s and the committee said, let's lower them all to the current rate. And they recommended that to the board, which they did. So there was, I don't know how many thousands, but that was a significant forgiveness. It's an interest, but in the end, to the loanee, it's the same thing. It's the same amount of money. So this is similar and it's underneath the 25,000, so it's allowable in that sense. So just so you know, it was, I think it was a four to two vote in favor.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I think some of the discussion too was the just recognition of the value of higher ed and that this was, it was worthwhile to any help that the committee might give them, so.
Thank you. So Commissioner Starlee, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, thank you Brady for explaining all that. I was just wondering how long they've had this loan?
I didn't bring that with me, but I'm sure it's, it's when they rebuilt or when they remodeled over here. So if you have a sense of how long ago that was.
It's been a while now.
Yeah.
Okay. And they've been paying?
More than five.
Okay. They've been paying a little bit along the way?
Oh, they pay monthly. They just pay monthly, as everybody does.
So was the original loan for 53?
Don't remember that either. It was probably 75.
75, okay. All right. Well, you know, they want to pay it off now and that makes sense to me.
Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
Would the interest be Brady, over the life of the loan that's remaining? Sorry. Speechless.
Well, at 3% roughly or between, at that time, it was probably between 3% and 4%.
You don't have your amortization schedule in?
No, I don't.
I thought, Commissioner Kirk has it.
It's a test to see if you pass. I mean, for $3,000, basically, that's what we're?
Essentially.
Yeah.
Less, little less than the interest that's remaining.
Okay, thank you.
You could characterize it as an interest forgiveness.
Maybe I should ask the question that one.
Thank you. Commissioner Burschain?
Well, I supported, I made the motion to where the vote went four to two. And, you know, I think the rationale's been stated pretty well, so I don't need to comment on that. We had a good discussion about it. I should add, I think that, I think it's safe to say that we would do this on a case by case basis. So, and we had one with Cooperation Station where we forgave interest and so we just did that a couple of months ago. So this is the second time we've done that and delayed some payments for Cooperation Station. So I think in these kinds of situations, we've got to look at the value to the community, but also in this case, you know, having more money to give to the community to develop, you know, economic development, which I think is important and pretty much the purpose of the group.
Thank you.
And I should just clarify, the first tie vote, it appeared that the reason it didn't pass is that the people voted against it, wanted to give more rather than the 2%, which was $1,000.
Oh, it, oh.
They were opposed to forgiving, they were opposed to forgiving so little.
Only 2%.
That's a big deal, Brady.
Yeah. Thank you. That's really helpful. Commissioner Deschaux?
I'm actually opposed to it. I don't think that's, it's fair, hitting fair to Odin right above him who's just getting a loan from it and the next one, you're forgiving $3,200 of the loan, so.
Okay. So I would just say in response to that, I get where you're coming from with the fairness, but that's not to say that this doesn't set a precedent, so I'm run up against, I mean, I absolutely get what you're saying. So I'll just leave it there. Commissioner Burschain?
I could just comment, being on the committee, that for Odin's loan, it's not a forgiveness, it was a loan. And the second issue was about getting the money back. And so I think the circumstances are different. It wouldn't preclude Odin to come back in 10 years or something, in five or as for forgiveness. I mean, that possibility exists. But the purpose of his was to grant him the loan.
And I will also say that it helps that fund be available to other people who need loans. So I think it helps, it actually helps people like Odin if we keep some money in that account that we can loan again. And I think we wouldn't be offering, we wouldn't be in this position of forgiveness if we weren't short of funds that we really want to have in the fund to be able to help people like Odin and other people in the community that need this kind of financing, so.
I mean, it could happen in the next few weeks. I mean, we have, I've got two or three people who have contacted me, but they're not ready to apply yet, so.
Can I still get your question? Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Thank you. Further discussion? Is there any opposed? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So four to, four and one. Thank you. Okay. Administrator Cadwell, we have, you know, a number of items, starting with the ASCE, which, what is ASCE?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I just looked that up so I could tell you.
Okay, thank you.
That's the American Society of Civil Engineers.
Oh, okay.
And what they're asking for, what the city of Duluth is asking for, is they're asking for regional support of them to do an infrastructure report card regionally that will, they hope the goal of that is to quantify our need for additional resources for road and bridge funding. And at this point in time, everybody in the region has signed off on it except for Cook County because we've had a shortage in the department where that request went to. So what I'm asking is authority from the board to draft a letter in support of this. And the only information that they're going to be working with Mindott on is road information that's already publicly available. They're just going to be asking Mindott to do some work in summarizing and making that available in summary report.
Great.
So they're asking for us just to send a letter so that they can make that request of the whole region.
Great. Thank you. So questions and comments? Commissioner Starlee?
I would support that.
Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
No questions.
Commissioner Burschain? Commissioner Deschaux?
Question.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Support. Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So questions and comments? Commissioner Starlee?
I would support that.
Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
No questions.
Commissioner Burschain?
Questions.
Commissioner Deschaux?
Question.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Support. Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great.
And then, Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is a general fund budget discussion. We've heard from our three major funds over the last, last two meetings. And our goal today was to summarize the major changes to the rest of the general fund. And I'm going to take a shot at a couple of the major changes and I'm going to ask Brady to supplement that, but if you wanted to follow along on that.
So does everybody feel happy now that we have a big book of all the numbers? You can all feel, you have all the information?
If you, if you look at the green code here, and we've broken it up a little bit in sections now, there's a general section, public safety section, which we ought to look at in your tabs, sanitation, health, culture, recreation. It mostly follows the numbers quite, a little bit different.
Brady, is the line item summary?
Yeah, that should be in the front, apartment by department summary. Should be two pages.
That's all right.
Thank you.
So capital two?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's way in the front.
So it's in this little M.O.
It's in the sleeve, yeah.
Okay, but it's not two pages, it's?
It's from the back.
From the back, thank you.
Page four.
Yeah. All right, we're on the same page, literally.
So if I, if I could just summarize a couple of the changes that are on here and the context within that. The, the basic assumptions on cost of living and wages is 2.5% for 2018. Again, that's something we have to negotiate. We know sometimes that goes up or down, but that's where, that's our starting place and the assumptions that we're making representing this budget. We have a note there.
There's a general section, public safety section, which we ought to look at, your tabs. Sanitation, health, culture, recreation. It mostly follows the numbers quite, a little bit different.
Brady, is, is the, is the line item summary?
Yeah, that should be in the, in the front, the apartment by department summary. Should be two pages.
That's all right.
Thank you.
So, capital two?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's way in the front.
So it's in this little M.O.?
It's in the sleeve, yeah.
Okay, but it's not two pages, it's-
It's from the back.
From the back, thank you. Yeah.
Page two-four.
Alright, we're on the same page, literally.
So if I, if I could just, um, summarize a couple of the changes that are on here and the context within that. The, the basic assumptions on cost of living and, and wages is two-point-five percent for 2018. Um, again, that's something we have to negotiate. We know sometimes that goes up or down, but that's where, that's our starting place in the assumptions that we're making representing this budget. We have a note there under forty-one, General Finance and Administration. In all of the summary data and all the individual data that we did, we've calculated in a fifteen percent increase for health insurance. From what we've heard, the average increase is fifteen percent through Northeast Service Cooperative, and our usage is again above average. So we put in a number to cover an assumption that it may be higher than that. So that, that represents a number to bump that up to anticipating a twenty percent increase. These are exactly the types of assumptions that-
Okay.
-we have to refine and modify as we walk through this process. We will find out before the end of August what our actual proposed renewal rates are. And on September eleventh, they're having the public meeting at Northeast Service Cooperative to actually issue our renewal packet, which gives us not only the renewal price on the current plan, but all of the other options that they'd make available to us as well. And, and, um, those of you working on negotiations know we've been having conversations about what that looks like going forward, so I'm just giving you the best information we have now and kind of the timeline as to when we'll have better information related to those items. Under Data Processing sixty, we show an additional one-half FTE, and that is Rena's request to bring in somebody partway through the year to begin training, because we're anticipating a retirement. Under the Administrator's, um, budget, we're representing two changes. One is bringing the fiscal officer on in Health and Human Services, means that Julie does, they no longer, we're no longer budgeting for twenty-five percent of Julie's time up in Health and Human Services. We're absorbing it all in the Administrator's budget. And that additional twenty-five percent would go towards, um, communication support, is the plan for that. But that's why the, the number is different. And then I plugged in a number, um, for budgeting for staff, uh, development. And the number that I roughly plugged in there is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per employee times a hundred-and-ten employees, which is about twenty-seven thousand dollars. And I'm, I'm showing it because we have a need for an employee development program above and beyond what we're doing for required licensure, for required ongoing education. Um, and I want to show the need, and, um, and I understand that this may not be the time that we add that capacity, but I, but I want to show it.
Thank you.
Under Maintenance, we are showing an additional one-half FTE. Uh, we added, um, the second position at the YMCA. We knew when we were doing that, we were only going to be allocating a part of that position to YMCA, and the other part would be going towards general maintenance. So this is showing that change that was approved, uh, several meetings ago. Uh, the Veteran's Service Officer is making a request. We talked this morning about, um, about the need that, that, the population that she is serving through Veteran's Service Office and through, um, medical assistance and, and long-term care arrangements is, um, she's really strapped to do a decent job on either one because of the hours that she has. And we also know that we're ballooning in those populations over the next several years. So, this proposal is for, is to go to a thirty-five-hour, um, Veteran's Service Officer. Sheriff's Department, we already talked about the change there last week.
Does this have the update that he announced on the radio yesterday?
This does not.
This is the K-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it does now, and I don't know, let me look at yours, because I put it in there.
The one that, this says as of eight-four on the top of the paper that I'm looking at.
Yeah, so I don't think, just want to make sure, no, it's not in, it's not in your version. It's in my version now, so we put it-
Do you know, do you know what that lump sum number was?
Yeah, it was nineteen thousand nine fifty.
Tagged a K-nine?
Yeah.
Nineteen nine fifty?
So his total levy there would go to one million nine twenty-nine forty-seven.
Which would be instead of twelve-point-two percent increase, like thirteen?
Thirteen-point-four.
I made that in my head.
Other, other major changes, where there, where there are no notes really, the, the changes are the assumptions of wages and benefits, and that's the only, that's the only impact to levy. The reclass of the, of the Emergency Services Manager to Emergency Services and Communication Director is represented in number two-eighty, yes?
Yes.
I think the, uh, other large item is, in Soil and Water, is the state of Minnesota is again making available the matching funds for the project grants. So they are asking for the full grant amount to maximize the impact of that. And last year, we did not grant that additional requ, the, the full additional match. But the state is offering it again this year. I believe that there is some opportunity, that the city may be providing some of the-
I think they already approved it.
Of the, of the money towards that match, so this is a number that's in, that's in flux. And then the other additional comments in there will take up with, uh, a conversation about discretionary funding and limits that we want to send for that in the process that we're going to do to, um, review those requests. But generally, those are the, those are the major assumptions, that we're adding a temporary half FTE in MIS for succession planning. We've already added a half an FTE to the maintenance staff due to increased needs. We're showing the additional point-two-five in Administrator's Office. And we are showing a proposed, um, twenty to thirty-five hour increase for Veteran's Service Officer. The comment I would make about that is the assumptions, but on the other, on the other end, related to the Health and Human Services budget, basically represented that as an open position. That's what showed up on their 2018 proposed, um, plan, is to, um, not have a twenty-hour per month, or to per-week person working on those services, but to have a forty. So that's included in the one-point-five additional FTE in the Health and Human Services request.
Okay, so I'm confused. So the, um, this is the point-four-two FTE with Veteran's Services, but the PHHS is also showing it?
Is also showing, is also showing a half FTE increase to provide additional services to that portion of our population.
Okay.
And in general, I would say that people are being, again, very conservative and very thoughtful in making their requests, line item by line item, uh, aside from things that we've already approved individually. This is a representation of the continuation of, of business as usual through the general fund, with those half dozen exceptions. And there, there are generally two major questions that I'm going to ask, ask the board to think about today, and I don't even necessarily need an answer, but one is, when we look at discretionary funding, we've talked about having a subgroup of the Health, Public Health Advisory Board review the public health-related requests. And in order to give them that task, we need to kind of set a limit. Uh, and we've, we've had conversations about limits. Are we going to limit it to what we granted last year? Are we going to tie it to a percent of the levy that we've done over the past couple of years? What's a general, um, what's a general direction we're going to give them for that, to do that work? And then the other, the other general question is, what, so we showed in Health and Human Services an increase, um, of seven-and-a-half staff over the last several years, couple, three years, and, um, or ten staff from, from two thousand six to now. And ten FTE within, um, average FTE within our budget is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of additional costs that we've added to the budget, but we haven't operationalized. And we have, the other primary cost is the gap between what we're getting for funding for the maintenance of our roads and what it's actually costing to provide for the maintenance of our roads. So however we, we look at this, um, the current service level that we have requires, um, requires the commitment that we've made, and we've made on an individual basis and a case-by-case basis. But what we haven't done is we haven't made an adjustment to the sources of revenue that we have to provide that. So we have to balance the budget one way or the other. At our last Budget Committee meeting, we reviewed two plans to normalize the budget over the course of three years. And we shared that information at Committee the whole, I think in June, did we have that first conversation? That if we have roughly three-and-a-half million dollars of unmet need over three years, there's a couple of ways to get at that. Um, and we talked about, you know, an incremental, a higher levy in this year, and then a lower increase for the next year, and a lower increase for the year after that, down to hopefully a normalized, uh, and, ex, regular increase in levy to, to adjust to the cost of living. You know, something indexed to the cost of living. Or we talked about something of a weighted balance over three years to get us to the point that we have a, have a similar increase over the next three years to get us to that point. Or, we have to have a conversation about service levels. But essentially, we've got about a million-dollar-a-year gap in our operational budget that we have sustained for the last many years, but for at least the last three or four years that I've been able to go back and look specifically at what we've done to operationalize those increases in costs, is we've spent fund balance, and we're showing representation of rounding the corner and needing to manage and add to our fund balance. We're also showing, um, deferring capital equipment. And we know that now we're at the point where we're, where we have to stop doing that, and we have to start making plans to take care of our buildings and our facilities and our capital, uh, equipment, specifically the highway equipment. We can have that long-range conversation. I think Lisa and the staff at the Highway Department did a really good job of not showing six-hundred thousand dollars a year that, this year, in, in equipment. And we can still talk about, uh, generally what we need to do in the Highway Department, but the budget they proposed this year was cut back because they said, okay, we're, we're going to pause, we're going to have new leadership, we're going to take a look at this. But we, we need to make it a strategic decision, and we need to have a plan on how we're going to do that going forward. And, um, and I, and I would hope that what we do is set a goal to over, in, in one year, we could do it in one year. That's a big number, and nobody really wants to look at it. Or we could do it over the course of three years and, um, and regularize our operational budget. And that's, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm asking us to have a conversation about. Otherwise, we can generally, we can specifically ask questions about any of these line items that you have. You do now have the book, so you can run through and look at the details. Remember the, the budgets that you got last week related to highway and, um, law enforcement?
Have a seat?
Can, can go, can go right in here.
Yeah, great.
And I just handed out a, a summary of those discretionary, so, um, so you can see the changes from last year. And we didn't put everything in the book, that every discretionary, some put, you know, a lot more detail than others, but it's all, it's all online now. So let me know if you want to look at one, and just email it. You can read the detail.
So it needs to be emailed?
We can either make copies for you or email it to you, but the book gets a little unwieldy, so...
Makes more sense. Thank you. I just have one question, Jeff, about the, the scenario of big, medium, medium, regular, or medium, 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 regular. Between those two, is there a cost difference overall? Or is it pretty much the, because that's hard to analyze, because costs have different values in different years, but-
One of the, one of the possibilities we talked about at the Budget Committee meeting, and I think we've alluded to, um, in, in our conversations, is that we have this three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of, of past debt for the two graders that we've purchased, and we've deferred the payments on. And we could, um, potentially think about refinancing that into some of our debt, and, and that being one way. So, we'll just name it, the, the two plans were a nineteen-point-nine-
Mm-hmm, yep.
A thirteen-point-nine and an eight-point-nine, to get us down to, uh, a five-to-six percent increase. And I can explain why five-to-six percent is normal, as opposed to three, three, three-to-four percent. Or we talked about doing a fifteen, fourteen, thirteen.
Great.
Somewhat, somewhat of a balance. So the difference between nineteen-point-nine and fourteen-point-nine is roughly that three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of, of bills that we have to pay for something that we've already got.
Okay, and there's interest attached to it?
And there's interest attached to that as well.
Yeah, so, but that's included in the fifteen, fourteen, and thirteen? Interest is all accounted for?
So, so ten percent on a seven-point-eight million dollar budget is seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand. Five percent of that, half of that is three-hundred-and-ninety thousand. We've got three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars sitting out here in those payments for something that we've already got, that we're not going to get anything more for.
Right.
Or, we take a look at, um, phasing some of these other requests. Like, is this the year that we actually put some money aside for an employee development program? Or do we put it, do we backweight that down into the three-year plan? Regardless, if there's support for balancing the budget and the level of service that we have, we feel that we can find a way to work with the numbers to make either one of those scenarios play out and, and, and work, because we do have some latitude to, um, to, to work with the finances that we have, to work with the budgets that we have, to, to normalize that. So either one of those is not a significant change. Choosing to do something other than a plan that gives us that amount means we have to have a conversation about service levels.
Okay, makes sense. So not significant difference between the two, those two scenarios?
I, I don't know that there's going to be a significant cost difference between doing the two of those. Did, was this one-page summary in the book yet, Brady?
It's not in the book.
Okay, so, so one of the, and, and good news is, the last two years that I've started this process, our, our cover sheet that shows, and we'll get you copies of this, is the proposed, but this is, I would want to get the newest one that Brady has. This is one I have from last week, and this is one of those that changes.
It's already old.
It's already old.
Yeah, okay.
But, um, this is the cover sheet that's, that shows the, the total increase. And it shows the total levy impact of a twenty-point-two-nine percent. When we just summarize all the requests that have been made, and for the last two years, three years, we've started at twenty-eight.
Right.
So we've already worked, and the staff has already responded and said, okay, these are the things that we really need, and these are the things that we really, um, that, we're saying we really need to provide the services that we do, but we're mitigating our requests based on the fact that we know we need to be as lean as possible. So the, the fact that we started nine percent lower than we have previously represents a commitment by the staff. And I would also make the comment that all of the proposed changes that I, I ran through initially are already shown in here.
Including the health, the additional health insurance is in here. And the, we added a hundred thousand for the use of, to add to the fund balance. That's the red hundred thousand over there in the use of fund, because it's negative, it means we're adding.
Putting money back in it?
This is to put money back into that fund balance.
Right, right, right.
And we, we need to, we haven't talked about building fund yet, and we haven't finalized YMCA. Those are two we got to talk about, and then that twenty-seven CIP bonds, that's not an official number. That's, that's what we, uh, what we've talked about with Ellers. And then just put it out there for, I just did an amortization schedule with three-and-a-half percent is what they guessed at, so...
Okay.
So those, those numbers are yet to come.
Great.
It's two-seventy on the Highway Department, that includes that, the two pieces of equipment that I asked to go?
That includes what was proposed last week, so-
I never had a discussion on that?
We, we haven't had that conversation. We're showing it in the larger budget discussion. Um, we haven't authorized the purchases. The final budget won't be approved until December. We're just kind of working towards, towards that. I, I would suggest that we have that conversation at the next Highway Advisory Board. Get that scheduled and, and have that conversation. But I would also strongly recommend that we have a conversation about looking at the whole plan for capital equipment and not line-iteming out numbers from the current plan.
When you have four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, you're trying to figure out how to pay for a loan, and you want to add another two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars to it, that really doesn't make much sense.
But, but- But Commissioner Deschaux, the reason that we have a plan is because before we had a plan, some years we'd have zero and the next year we'd have 1.2 million. And then we'd have 000 and then we'd have 1.5 million and then we'd go 00. And to have a regular plan and a planned amount for capital improvements is much easier for a sustainable budget practice than to replace things when they break to the point that you can't fix them anymore and actually have to break them in the middle of a budget year when you haven't set money aside for that. So, there are options. We really could rebuild the fund balance. This is analogous to the conversation we had this morning related to Health and Human Services. We could rebuild the fund balance in the Highway Department and have $1.5 million just sitting there to replace big pieces when they become non-functional.
But we don't have that right now?
We don't have that right now. And until we have that, we have to budget for some level of replacements. And I completely appreciate and understand your experience with this above and beyond the experience that some of our other board members have. And we should have that conversation. We can have that conversation before we authorize the purchase of those vehicles.
We will have that conversation.
But we have to show some assumption in here. And in all honesty, that increase is not related to those vehicles. That increase is related to the cost of increase with staff and benefits.
That's the same number that was on there with the purchase of the new $140,000 tractor and the $80,000 mini excavator?
Yes. It is. It's the same number. But that number is representative of those two pieces. It's also representative of the cost for staff and wages and benefits increases.
Commissioner DuKirk.
So, Commissioner Deschaux likes to wipe out the big things, but I like to go to the little things and get some of those off. I'm looking at our discretionary nonprofit and we've got a $73,400 increase from last year's request. And it's in the new sheet that was just being up. The non-mandated levies is what Commissioner DuKirk is talking about right now. Yeah. And you know, over the past few years, we've been saying no new requests, no increase. And we've been decreasing what, so I would like the fellow commissioners, if we just left everyone at what we offered last year, that would drop us down at least $68,000. And we had a few organizations that have had requests in the past that do not need funding this year. So, I know these services are important. I support having them. I don't support completely eliminating them. But that's 1% of our levy, almost, to just put it where it was.
I would, I would ask, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We have to look at numbers. We have to look at ratios. We have to look at percentages. But if we don't look at the service level and the impact and the investment we're making in the community, then we're not having a complete conversation. And we can talk about a 1% reduction in the levy and that can be important. And we have to have, we will have to have that conversation. We do. But, but the more important thing, and we're not, this is August. We don't, we're not, what we want to set is we want to set the table so that if we ask a group of people to study these requests for us and make a recommendation, they give us a recommendation that we can likely support in September and again in December. So, if, on the bottom of this discretionary sheet, we talk about the discretionary, the formula, when originally we had talked about 4% of levy for discretionary and then we said, okay, well, some of the things went above this line and we're going to discuss those independently. So, we were talking about 3% of the levy towards, available towards discretionary. Is 3% still our goal or should it be less than that? I think that's the general, that's the general conversation we should have. Because if we really want to delegate the authority to review this to a subcommittee, the Health and Human Services Advisory, to review this and make a recommendation back to this board, we want to give them a general scope. And we want to, and then we want to be able to say, okay, we gave you, you know, if the number is 2%, well, then we make it 2%. If it's 2.5%, then we make it 2.5% and then we not line item it out later. So, yeah, essentially, we have to have a conversation about what that number is going to be soon because they need to meet and make a recommendation based on that. But we don't have to pick and choose because we're going to give them general authority to review those and make a recommendation to us, if that makes sense.
Right. So, Commissioner...
Yeah, I would just like to comment too that when the, let's just take non-mandated levies. We reduce those, or I wasn't part of that, but the board did. But I'm responsible for it. I have to deal with it. So, you know, we reduce some things. And one of the things that, you know, I would like to throw out there for consideration is something that I've given thought over and I've learned over the years is that sometimes, you know, whenever we look at cutting a percent or 2%, we also have to look at what that value is to the community. And I think, you know, the whole purpose of non-mandated levies is to sort of invest in our future and our community and those kinds of things. So, I think that whenever we, you know, just say, well, we're going to reduce it by 1% or 2%, I would always ask, you know, the question, what implications does that have with value to our future?
Commissioner DuKirk. Yeah. I just want non-mandateds to be treated the same as we treat our staff and we continually ask our staff to make reductions and we don't necessarily make the same requirement on this. I think the services are important. I think that if we don't have them, yes, there is a ripple effect and yes, it does affect the community as a whole. But I think that they should have, at a minimum, the same scrutiny that everybody else that works for us does. So, it seems like there are a few questions that we've leaked into non-mandated. A couple of questions.
I know. They're a target every time.
Yeah. But, well, they're a target because they're not harsh. But we're talking percentages of levy. So, that's a decision we need to make. Do we want it to be in? I think Commissioner Burscham, you might be in favor of that or might not based on what I just heard about the value. And so, that's one question. But then the second question is, did we, we're all in agreement that the PHHS Advisory Committee would be making those decisions on the?
Recommendations.
Yeah. Would make recommendations. That's right. We make the final decision, but they would be looking at this great scrutiny and skill that they bring to the table from their experience and...
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to clarify that. What they would be reviewing are the things that have an impact on public health. Those needs or services that if somebody else wasn't providing them in the county, we would be hiring staff to provide them. Or we would have people doing without in our community. Which, and in the end, would end up costing more on those services that we are required to provide. If people don't have access to legal aid, if people don't have access to Violence Prevention Center, although they didn't ask for money today, if people don't have access to senior center and meals and programs like that, it impacts their quality of life and we end up intervening in the required human service programs. So, of the $147,000 last year in this group, 125 roughly was public health. So, we do want them to be held to the same test as the rest of our employees. But we also want to be held to the test of what's the appropriate thing to do for the community and what money do we spend now so that we don't spend more later.
So, we're adding that layer of expertise. We're adding that layer of...
To review those and make the recommendation.
Which makes sense. Commissioner?
One clarification. In this entire budget, are we asking, we're not implying any cuts in staff? We're only looking at adding in a couple of areas?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. This budget represents the current staff that we have and the additions that we called out this morning.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to come up with that.
Okay. So, we have this information and we shall, and we're just seeing this for the first time. So, we will be digesting. Is there?
So, the next points of conversation, next Tuesday after the board meeting, we're going to have another Budget Committee meeting. We are going to have the additional work session on August 29th where we're going to be able to look at this information laid out on the assumptions of the Financial Management Plan by Ellers. So, basically, that day is going to be split. We're going to start with Ellers showing us the Financial Management Plan and the impacts of these proposed changes on that. And then we'll be having more general budget conversations. And then we are planning on having our Town Hall meetings that we'll be scheduling for September. So, one of the other things that I was hoping, WTIP has asked us to participate in Third Thursday on August 24th, so I'd like to know who's available to participate on that. I thought that we would have one of the representatives from the Budget Committee sit on that because they've had the most conversation. Brady and I need to be there. Chair or Vice Chair, whoever's available, I thought would be a decent workup on that. But then we need to also schedule the Town Hall meetings. And at our meeting last week, we talked about people going and checking their calendars and seeing what would work to have us come down and take a look at those. So, we can, I'd like to have a general conversation today about what we want to do for discretionary funding. I'd like to have a general conversation about what our target is, if we want to have a balanced approach to this, or if we want to have a front-end loaded approach to this, or if we need to go back to the drawing board and show a different level of service projection. So that when we go to the Town Hall meetings, that we're able to show materials that generally represent the board's feelings at this point in time.
Okay. So, those are two things. So, Commissioner DuKirk?
I would like the board to consider 2% in the formula for discretionary funding, which would be an increase from the amount received last year. 2% would be 157, 278. I'll leave the pennies out, Brady.
2% would be 157?
278. So, it would be an increase and I would be open to increasing that as we balance our budget. You know, maybe next year we do 2.5 for the discretionary. But if we go to 2% instead of 3%, that's still an increase to discretionary, but it's much less than what's requested. And nobody has to answer today. That's just open for you for next week.
There's 2%.
We came in way under.
We had a target of 3% and we did not, and we came in with less, yes.
Yep.
It's because we did random cuts at the last minute.
So, you're asking for the radio is the 24th? And we have to work all this in before the 19th of September?
Yes.
So, Jenny, if you want to do that, if you don't, I'll do it.
Do you want both people from the Budget Committee in the Third Thursday conversation or just one?
They're asking for three to four people. And I think we should have a couple of commissioners there. And I think Brady and I need to be there with the numbers and the sharp pencil.
Is that at 7 o'clock?
Yes. 7 to 8 on the 24th.
So, I would say one person from the Budget Committee and Jane and I are going to draw straws. I would appoint you.
Oh, you're going to stack the straws and ask for the numbers. I'm willing to do it.
For what?
The 24th.
Is that supposed to be a Budget Committee person or?
Yeah. Also.
And also one of you.
So, three to four people would be Brady, Minister Cadwell, one person from the Budget Committee and Chair, Vice Chair, I guess is sort of how I... Brady would do it in the head of the Vice Chair position and then one person from the Budget Committee to give that perspective with that in-depth look in from the committee. So, you guys need to go with this?
I'll let Jenny decide.
I'm fine.
What is "I'm fine"? You'll do it?
I'm fine to do it. And that's, we have two men and two women. That's 50 for the balance.
It's going to have to be Jeffy because it's Ginny, Heidi, Brady.
Anyway, so, does that, okay. So, that takes care of that?
So, that answers that question?
That answers that question. So, we still have the two big questions. It's, and we need to, we should decide that today so that you can go forward with presenting the right information throughout the rest of our budget process.
I think for us, I think for us to provide the best information and work towards something the board can support, we should have a general idea. Out of the budget conversation, there was support for a balanced approach over the three years.
Okay. Balanced meaning the 15, 14, 13. So, that's kind of the Budget Committee's recommendation? Is that what I'm hearing? That's the feeling? Okay. And if there isn't much difference in the outcome of that, makes sense to me? I mean, if there's no benefit to pulling the Band-Aid off fast, I don't know. Anyway.
We try to do it.
Madam Chair, the only benefit to pulling the Band-Aid off fast is that not pulling the Band-Aid off fast requires a commitment over the next three years to continue.
Right. Or we're talking reduction of services. And we're talking that now as well as in the future. That option always exists. It's not that, but if we want the balanced budget to occur, those are the conversations we need to have. And if that's what the Budget Committee is recommending, yes.
Yeah. And I think we have to understand that there is a minor trade-off on there. Whenever you distribute something out, you got, we don't know what cost of living is going to be. I mean, you know, but we can plan for it, but it certainly is a wise way to go.
Yeah. There are a lot of details.
It's much easier to do it one year and then you've got the incremental benefit of that year to go forward. But, I don't know. I guess I would like to say that, you know, that big leap is quite a jump. Even though a lot of it is past decisions, I think we should do everything we can to ease that, you know, initial kind of high cost to do some correction.
So, that's, Commissioner Deschaux, do you have an opinion of these? I mean, of the, let's just weigh the top two. Your opinion maybe to...
I agree with Myron there to hit people with all the dang dang dang, you know. That's the biggest complaint you get on the street.
Right.
What would you think of getting 40% taxes in three years?
It'd be hard.
Yeah, exactly. There's an answer.
So, you're opposed to the 15, 14, 13?
Yes, I am.
Oh, I misunderstood.
So did I because Myron's in support of it.
So, just for clarification, so Commissioner Deschaux, you're more in the camp of you want to really look at services?
I think we need to stretch it out a little farther here. You know, every time it comes up to money, you're threatening people with services and this and that. And you've got to remember, you had a, we work for the people. The people put us here.
But the people are also getting the benefit of the services. So, it's not that we're, we're not, it's not that we're misrepresenting the people. It's just, we are representing that the people and the quality of life in Cook County require certain services. So, it's all a matter of paying for them evidently. So, I think I hear you. And Commissioner Burscham, I think I hear you. Commissioner DuKirk, do you have a preference of the?
I'd be comfortable with the 15, 14, and 13, but I would also like to hear from Commissioner Deschaux what level he's comfortable at.
I think it's a matter of going through the budget and looking at it, but, you know. I listened to the people that elected me. I listened to the people on the street, the people, the residents of Cook County, what they were saying.
Makes sense. And I think for this conversation, I think whether we choose the, what we're choosing is not, does not mean that we are committing to that. We're committing to a strategy for the rest of the budget process that would give us the data to work with.
And what's the other option? 19?
19, 9, 13, 9, 8, 9, 15, 14, 13. And both of those scenarios would be maintaining the services that we have.
We would still maintain services at 15, 14, 13?
Yes. Both of those show accommodating the revenue projection, the resource needs over the next three years.
So, the scenario three is to cut services. When we go out to our different districts, we need to put it in the people's hands. What are you willing to cut? What isn't important to you?
I've asked that over and over again and there's no answer to that.
Try it again. So, Commissioner Deschaux, that's what you need to say. So, we list these things, law enforcement, health and human services, all of that. Now, what would you like to cut? Now, what would you like to cut? Do you know your neighbor who needs this? Do you know, somebody called for the law enforcement and they were there right away? But if we cut that, what happens there? So, those are the things you get, we're getting down to the roots of people, because we're each going to represent our districts. So, I feel that that's, put it in their lap for a while. We present, you know, our information, and we say, this is, this is the budget, this is where we're looking at, three-year plan, and how can you help us? Because you elected us, how can you help us then?
It's not that easy, because they're not going to say cut highway, they're not going to say cut law enforcement. You know, we had a meeting with homeowners on Saturday, and Elena Berg came in and did a wonderful presentation, and she talked about our waters and the things that we do and what soil and water does, and it kind of hit home for me, because we talked about the Septic Loan Program and where we are. And we used to have a lakefront septic inspection program that we had to put on hold, mostly because the inspections that the people are not following through on have moved up into the county attorney's office, and we just don't have the staffing to continue those cases in that office. So, that's the question. Is the water quality so important to you that you're willing to add the staff to pay for that service? That's the detailed question that you have to ask the public. You can't just say to somebody, "So, do you not want the Highway Department anymore?" They're not going to have an answer for you. So, you say, "These are, these are all of the services that you receive in this community. What's important to you?" That meeting was homeowners on a lake. So, obviously, they were all like, "Okay. No, I don't get plowing because I don't live here in the winter, but I'm not going to say cut it for everybody else." But they said, "I support the loan program, I support soil and water, I support the attorney's office following through on it, so I'm okay paying additional taxes because I get that service." So, I don't know. I mean, if, if there was a great way to ask the public what they want to cut, that would be wonderful, but I don't think we're going to get, I don't think we're going to get that answer, because I've asked it over and over. I've taken these books, and I've sat down with people at Java Moose, and I've sat with people at the Co-op, and I've gone line by line, and they look at it, and I have yet to meet one person that can tell me what they don't want.
Well, in a way, that's what they're relying on us for.
I know. That's the final answer. That's what we elected you for, hey, you do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, back to the question, I think we've, we've weighed in. So, Commissioner Sterling, I would ask you, of the three scenarios, just, this isn't, doesn't mean this is where we end up, but of the three scenarios, which scenario would you advocate for going forward in the budget process? The 19.9, 13.9, 8.9 is what, is door number one? 15, 14, 13, door number two? Or the third, which is to cut services?
The 13, 14.
Okay. 15, 14, 13.
As of right now.
Okay, yeah. And seriously, we're, we're going to be discussing all of this. This isn't, this isn't the end-all, but this gives us a direction to move in for...
Well, for the Budget Committee to talk about, too.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, so I think we have Commissioner...
Can I make one more comment? And I don't know if this is possible, but, you know, a lot of the public understanding of budgets and so forth, this, they equate the levy increase with their increase in taxes. And is there some kind of median or anything that, you know, this would be the impact? You know, and then you've got, of course, the circuit breaker with the state, you know, kicking in, and, and, you know, to some extent, that might be better to go 19, because some people would get, would get a return. I mean, but, that's getting complex, but I mean, is there? And I'm just asking that in a very...
We've done it. Brady brings in a sheet and does the median home, which happens to be his usually, and then says what the amount is based on the levy.
So, when we have our public meetings, we can have that available. So, 15, and a 14, and 13 means this much median household.
Right. Which is really useful information. That's really the...
Because I think we equated the same thing, and it's not...
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, one of the reasons for wanting to have a goal this far out, which isn't that far out anymore, is so that we can prepare the documentation that shows what that costs, but also how that benefits. In all honesty, people have said during the whole running for District One Commissioner, they said, "We got to make this a place where people want to do business." Right now, our low tax rate costs our commercial taxpayers more to do business in Cook County. If we wanted to, if we wanted to make this a place where they could do business, we would raise our rates to be the same as they are in St. Louis County, and we would reduce the amount that their, that our corporate businesses are paying into the state general tax and the fiscal disparities, and most of their dollars then would stay in the county. Taxes are a goofy thing. When somebody benefits, somebody else pays. And, and the best we can do is try to provide a cost benefit for the, for the different scenarios, and, and zooming in on one scenario, it gives us an opportunity to create some messaging and some resources and answer some questions related to that, and then we can also show how a change here has an impact here. And so, that's basically what we're going to do with this information, and that's what we hope to do with the town hall meetings, is to be able to take that information from these committee, from the Board meetings, from the committee meetings, out to the people, and explain that. It was, I want to say it was six years ago, when Dayton was doing his first budget, they had a, they had a website up, and they said, "Here you go. You want to balance the budget? Balance the budget." And they put in all the presuppositions. We can have conversations about what services we're going to cut, but you know what? We don't have the authority to cut everything we think we'd like to cut. And in all honesty, if we, if we gave the population a budget worksheet and said, "Here you go, here's your, here's the things you can change, here's the things you can't change," the public response to that opportunity was really good, because then people understood, A, it's really complicated, and B, you can't change something without having an unintended consequence someplace else.
It's all connected.
And I, and I really hope that we can improve the messaging, and we can improve the understanding, and we can improve people's appreciation for what they're getting. But, we're not, we're not going to satisfy the goal of people not wanting to pay any taxes.
Are we still second or first lowest in the 87 counties?
We are, we do still have one of the very lowest net effective tax rates. Numbers can say anything you want them to say.
Right.
So, that's why I think the conversation really needs to be about what, what role does the county have, is required to play in this community, and what role should we play because of the community that we are? Is, is a better question than, than to say, "Let's, let's make this number such and such."
Just the homeowner meeting I was at, the one question I was asked was, "Were we the highest in the state last year for 2017?" And I know numbers have different meanings, and I, you know...
Were we the highest in the state? No, we were about the lowest. But, but people are asking about a particular number, and particular numbers need context. And I, and I, and I saw that post, and I, and I saw that, and I'm going, hmm, that doesn't help to clarify.
No, it doesn't.
Because we can ask a particular question, and, and it has several different possible answers.
Right.
And what are we, what are we asking?
Right.
And the, and the basic question is, and the, and the great opportunity we have working in local government is we provide services to our neighbors.
Right. We all do better, we all do better. Did you have a question?
No, I would just like to talk about scheduling the town hall meetings, if we're all done with everything else.
Because I think, I think we got four, 15, 14, 13, and one, cut services, or look at services. Okay. Do more. Do, and I think we're all in that same boat, do more as well. Four.
So, yeah, I would, we'll, we'll target, we'll work on that, we'll, we'll prepare materials related to, to both of those thoughts. Of course, you know, we have opportunities. Is this, this year, we're showing, putting $100,000 back into fund balance?
Right.
Do we need to? We have to have that evaluation. We haven't had that evaluation. We need to start showing putting money back into the fund balance as opposed to taking from it. But how much do we have to put in this year? We just put a placeholder. Employee development, is that something we have to do this year? Full-time veteran service actors, is that, is that something we have to do this year? And we have to make several choices that get us there, that don't talk about our level of service, that talk about, you know, stretching it out over a period of time. And we could say we don't need to do any of those things. We really, we really could, but we're, we're slightly ahead of the curve. I was having a conversation with the Administrator in Aiken County, and they're looking down the tunnel, because they ran this a little further than we did. They were still using fund balance to mitigate levy last year, and as their previous Administrator left, he said, "Don't do that anymore."
Don't do that? Easy for him to say.
And then had left it for them to figure out how they're going to not do that again.
Yeah.
So, she's got two major challenges. She can't go to fund balance this year, and they're authorizing a $10 million improvement to their courthouse.
Wow.
So, they, they have, we're not the only ones that are having significant difficulties because of, of the goal of making taxes as easy on people as possible. And that, that's a great, that's a great goal. But if you, if that's the primary goal, then you get to the point of other costs wagging the dog instead of just the backwards.
And even using fund balance, they had a 3.5% increase for 2017.
And here's the other point we're trying to avoid, is not comparing yourself to other counties, because it means nothing. You know, there's no context in that, but to also get to a sustainable place for us, which means that, and that's, these scenarios are all about that. So, we don't have to jump, as we look back on our 25-year history, and we see one year it's 0%, the next year is minus 5%, the next year is 25%, because we had one and a zero. So, or minus, you know, it's, it's, we, we want to even it out, we want to...
Consistent.
Be consistent. We want to have that scenario in 25 years, where we have maintained a certain levy, and we are, and we have money in the bank, not, not the scenario we're in right now. So, we want to create a sustainable, long-range strategy for levy. That's what we're trying to do. AM, yes, okay. So, back to...
Calendar.
Yeah, back to calendar.
I would like to consider myself, because of I have three township meetings, and they start the first part of September, so I could be the first kid on the block doing it on August 31st. What does your calendar say?
The evening of Thursday, August 31st is available.
Okay. Then it'll be right after the 29th. Okay?
Excuse me, did we pick Grand Marania? I think we did, didn't we?
The evening of...
I suggested we could hold it after the Financial Management Plan Public Meeting, which is scheduled for 6:00 on September 11th.
There we go, okay.
That we could do it the same night, if that...
So, the Bud, the Budget Town Hall was at 5:00 or 6:00?
I would, the Financial Management Plan Public Meeting would be at 6:00. I would propose the Town Hall at 7:00.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And for the West End, too, 7:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Desha, had you thought about a date on your calendar?
We're going to that first week in September. Whatever you want.
So, possibly the Thursday of the 7th?
No.
August 31st.
And up the trail?
I haven't had anyone contact me. Have you, anyone contact you?
I have not specifically.
So, we could do Scott Hall, which is mid-trail.
Mm-hmm.
So, whatever fits in with everyone else's schedule. If you want to do that first week of September, we might still have residents, seasonal residents still available.
You could go...
Tuesday is, I don't know, maybe about the first week of September. I'm just trying to remember when fire training is, so we're safe that week.
How about Wednesday, August 30th? Before, before Labor Day?
Wednesday, August 30th. Yep. Like 7:00 PM again?
Mm-hmm.
And when is this area?
September 11th.
7:00 after the Taylor's presentation?
Okay.
So, I will have Julie work with each of you to get these scheduled in the facility. She can coordinate with you on getting them scheduled at the right location and the right facility.
I will have to work there on that, because we're not sure.
We're going to have to draw straws.
Well, as to who you can do it with, right now. Okay.
Okay. We will work on that.
Did, um, do we have a grand party today?
We do. Yep. September 7th.
Okay, great. September 7th.
Wow, that's an accomplishment. This is great. Very good. Okay.
And I just sent a email to rent the hall.
Wow. Digital world is amazing. Yes. Okay. So, anything else on general fund budget discussion? Can we move into administrative update?
Yes.
Okay.
Just scheduling the next...
Oh, yes, great.
The next Highway Advisory Committee meeting. So, no, we can go.
Do we have any concerns?
No, we can go.
Okay.
Well, this is really easy. We checked everything off except for one thing.
Okay.
I have one additional update.
Okay.
The Human, Health and Human Service Director Search Committee met on Friday afternoon and recommended that we move forward with an internal search process first. So, what that would look like is that we would identify some Health and Human Services staff to supplement the search committee and be involved in, in the interviews of any internal candidates that we have, and if we are satisfied that we have an internal candidate, then we'll make a recommendation out of that pool. And if we aren't, then we would have to go back out to a larger pool after that point. Is that accurate summary?
That's accurate. Thank you.
So, that notice will be going out this week, and our policy requires a 10-day posting of internal positions, and so you would be getting an update. Well, not before the next meeting, because the 10 days wouldn't be done before the next meeting, so it would be, it would be in September that we would have an update on that. But if we have any update in between, we can certainly, I can certainly push that information out, we just wouldn't have a regularly scheduled meeting.
Great. Thank you. Excellent.
That, that's the only update I had. If people have questions, I take those, but everything else was related to budget, and I got notes on all those conversations.
Is there, this is just a question about Highway Department. I'm sure Kristen was here again this week, and...
The, the update from that is, we're basically pushed off a week again with the paving. So, we are going to be meeting on Monday next week to update the timeline on the CASA-7 project. I am meeting with the Engineering Techs Wednesday independently to review the contracts for the continuation of work related to County 17, 45, and future projects. So, we're meeting weekly or every other week to update on those projects.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, and the deadline, the application deadline for that position is August 25th.
So, that's coming up, too. Okay. So, we're moving forward with everything that's on our plates. Commissioner Concerns, Commissioner Reports, are there any? Commissioner DuKirk?
So, Jeff, you said that Public Health is an internal posting and then an external posting?
So, the, so the committee recommended doing an internal posting to fill the Public Health and Human Services Director position.
Okay.
And if we don't find a, a candidate that we recommend hiring for that position out of that posting, then we would go external after that.
Okay. And last, last week, we approved an internal posting in the Otterbeers Office, so I would like to ask the Board if they'd be comfortable doing an external posting also, to fill that office.
Madam Chair, Commissioner DuKirk, if I could, we really have to finish the one process first.
Okay.
Once we authorize an internal posting, we got to let that run the 10 days. That's just based on our HR policy.
Thank you. Other Commissioner Reports?
Just one clarification, Mr. Cadwell, for the internal posting for the Director of Health and Human Services. When, I didn't write down the date, when are we going to take action on that, or, or go external? Was it next week, or two weeks?
So, we'll get that posting up at some point this week.
Yep. Yeah.
And, and our policy requires that posting to be up for 10 days.
10 days. Okay. That's what I need. Okay.
Thank you.
And then if that doesn't work, you come back to us, or you come back with a recommendation.
So the Search Committee will bring a recommendation at the end of that process, either way.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.